Seven o'clock? So that's where the camera should be. Okay, so. Okay, great. All right, well, I would like to welcome everybody to the Board of Selectmen meeting. I'd like to call the order, the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for August 26, 2024. Please all rise with a flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. For selectwoman's update, it's just a couple of things. I actually did want to read a statement. And during last month's Board of Selectmen meeting, a number of residents had made some, what I would couch as inaccurate comments about the transparency and timing of the Academy referendum that was held in February 2022. So I felt compelled to correct for the record and lay out some supporting facts. The Academy referendum was a result of a fully transparent public process that lasted for over 15 years in this town. The future of the building was the subject of dozens of newspaper articles, a public poll, was studied and discussed by multiple town boards and committees at many different public hearings, workshops, and information sessions. Most recently, this included two well-intended public hearings, public information sessions within two months of the February 2022 referendum, each hosting over 110 deets. It was not snuck in, it was widely discussed in the public domain, particularly in the months leading up to the referendum. The timing of the referendum was driven by multiple factors. There were project-specific reasons that required an early 2020 vote for the other two questions on the ballot, the Madison School renewal plan and the sale of Island Avenue. They dictated the referendum timeline, and it was not intended to suppress the vote. A winter referendum was also in keeping with past practices by the town. For example, the town held the Sultan Meadow referendum in January 2010 and the Scranton Library vote in February 2017. The Board of Selectmen also took extraordinary new steps for the first time to make voting easier and provide more transparency around the vote. Past boards of selectmen had called referendums less than 30 days before voting, prohibiting, because of state guidelines, absentee ballot applications by mail. For this referendum, we ensured this board, the timeline allowed qualified voters to seek absentee ballots by mail, a much easier process than allowed in previous years. The town also sent a postcard for the first time notifying by mail every taxpayer in Madison with information on how to cast a vote prior to the referendum. The town also prepared an explanatory text, which we had never done before, for the project, a document that outlined facts about the project. They were available on the town website and in the town clerk's office, library, and senior center well before the referendum. These measures worked. That's 35.6% turnout, which ended up being on the higher side for standalone referendum and vastly surpasses the annual budget referendums which are held in May. Academy passed with a wide margin at 55% yes, 45% no, which equates to over 400 votes. The time of year does not drive the vote, public engagement does. So I just felt it was important to put that as a response and have that on the record. Just a few other updates. I do want to update that I'm going to be attending a conference next week that is being sponsored by a nonprofit think tank called the Hunts Institute. And the focus of this is early learning, and it's called the Early Learning Nation Policy Fellowship Conference. And the Hunts Institute does these things every year with different topics. And normally they invite state-elected officials, and there's representatives from all 50 states. This year, they actually, for the first time, have a local delegation. So this is the first time, local officials, although there'll be one other local official from Connecticut attending, and then a state delegation. So I think it's going to be interesting because we're going to be talking about how do you, at a local level, knowing I'm not in charge of the Board of Education, you know, I'm not the superintendent, it's more about how locally, before kids get into the school system, what can we do to enhance that experience or improve or offer greater access? So, and so out of that would be coming some takeaways and possibly action steps that we might want to consider here in Madison. So it's a great idea to kind of get new thinking around this. And I've been meeting with Gail about, you know, her experiences working with this early childhood learning group that she's established here in town. So it's working with the different preschools. So I think it'll be a really opportunity, and I'll give a report back to the board and see if there's something we might want to consider for that. Also, just want to mention, this project is still not 100% done. As you can tell, the temperature is still fluctuating a lot. It's not been commissioned yet, they're still working on the regulating, I guess, the temperature center from here and making sure everything is cohesive. So that's why you might see, it might seem a little bit still like a construction zone. So they've delayed the commission until they can iron out some of the problems that we're having. So it's probably shooting to make sure everything's going to work. And then finally, I think it's exciting to see, we're going into Labor Day weekend. And obviously, for our beaches, we're winding down. This will be the last weekend to remind the public that we have full staffing at the Surf Club, and the gates will be manned. I think also a reminder, will West Wharf be manned after?
So October 1st.
Yeah, yeah, West Wharf is a tricky one because of the hotels. So we tend to keep gates staffed there longer. But after Labor Day, there will not be any gates staffed at our beaches. So that is my update. And any other board member comments?
Nothing now.
I got just a few things. So heads up, if we could pull 6F out of the consent just for a brief discussion and then action, that's the disposition of the town vehicles.
Okay.
And I just want to say, everything you just said about the Academy referendum is 100% spot-on factually. And as somebody who was here and was a big advocate of the postcards, it was a hedge against having an out-of-sync vote. And I think it probably worked because, as you said, we've got a bigger turnout for the February referendum than we do for a lot of our budget referendums. That said, we have two national voting moments in town every single year, the budget and the general election, whether it's local or federal or just state. And then, and then the budget referendum as well. And I think that we should be aspiring as a board to pose all of our big public questions in one of those two moments. The, I know there are members of the community that don't realize we vote twice a year, but it has been that way for literally ever. And I think that big questions should be posed during those national voting moments. For no other reason, it costs us, what, $10,000 or $15,000 to hold a vote out of sync. Incrementally, it doesn't cost us any more to add a question on a referendum. And I have ultimate faith in the capacity of Madison voters to consider multiple issues on a ballot and not conflate their personal biases around national politics or even their biases around the operating budget of the town with other questions and decisions. So I will continue to advocate for us putting important questions on those two natural voting dates. But I will restate everything you said. I mean, we worked really, really hard to get the turnout in February. I think if we'd have worked that hard around a general or a budget, we would have had even more. So I think we did a good job in that vote. I do think it represented the mood of the town at the time. And the majority spoke. I think that that's, you know, we've got our marching orders, we need to move forward with that. Should this question come up, and that's very much an unanswered question, once we have the data, you know, should we then consider a second question? I think, you know, the budget referendum is the next likely time to do it.
And to that point, Bruce, there is some wording in the Board of Finance regulations when something is voted on at a referendum, you know, such as the Academy project. If there's going to be changes to that, then they do advocate for placing that question on the next budget referendum.
So it's, and I don't object to the disposition of town vehicles, I just have an idea.
You were going to really catch me off-guard on that one. Any other comments?
I like Bruce's idea that we should aspire to not hold referendum if we can possibly schedule them when there's an existing vote taking place on another matter. I think in this situation, circumstances dictated, the boards agreed that a February referendum may be sent at this particular time for this particular project. Most of us agree.
The majority.
The majority spoke.
The 2022.
On a much lighter note, I wanted to just mention that our town historian, Henry Briggs, received the Marquis de Lafayette on the town green on Saturday afternoon. Henry was all dressed up in his 18th-century finery. And the Marquis de Lafayette was sort of dressed up in his finery. It was a wonderful event. I think there were several hundred people who enjoyed, I guess it was a reenactment, and I think it lends some credence to what's later on our agenda about planning for future recognitions of historical events.
So, I'm sorry to miss it, but it sounded like it was a nice fun event, so that's great. Any other comments? Okay, great. So moving on to citizens' comments. Do we have any, I know we have some people present in the room. Anybody have a comment to make? Yep.
Yeah, great, so Sando Wood Drack Madison. I just want to thank you for the timeline you laid out and say that I completely agree with Bruce and Jen's evaluation here. If we take, and I hope that we do, the postcards and the paper announcements and everything that you mentioned and laid out, and then I would like to, as a citizen, see that happen during the town budget referendum as well for any future Academy votes or any votes that we have. Because I think that would help bolster the referendum turnout as well, which is also very important.
Any other hands raised here? Then I'll go to online. Any hands raised online?
No hands are raised.
Okay, great. All right, moving on. So I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item F. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, abstentions, okay, consent agenda passes. And then, I guess I would like to make a motion to approve item 6F, disposition of town vehicles per municipal auction per the disposition of town property policy.
So that's like, we're opening the agenda?
I don't know exactly how it works with the consent agenda.
I think it's fine as long as we agree, now I can make a move and approve it. From the consent agenda.
So I brought this up to Stacy a month or two ago in a casual way. But it struck me, I think in the last time that we did this, that Madison taxpayers paid for these vehicles. And since we're putting them out on open bid, and I think we have a sort of a benchmark value on each of these vehicles, I was wondering if there's any way we can give Madison residents first crack
At purchasing?
At purchasing these vehicles.
Similar to what we did with the boats?
Well, I don't know that that's a great example of it because that saved us a dump fee of giving them away. And I don't expect that there would be a lot of call for a lot of the equipment that comes in. But there are some cars in there, there's some, I think there's a minivan in this one. And I don't know that it's possible. I would really love for us to explore the opportunity to give Madison taxpayers first crack. That's something that Madison taxpayers
Bruce wants an old postcard, that's what I'm hearing.
I don't, I want the, no, I want the motorcycle. That's a different story.
I guess we would have to look into how we would manage that because obviously our finance office is not also trained in running
Negotiations?
Yeah. I'm wondering if there is, you know, these things, maybe it's like an autopilot online thing now, isn't it? I mean, I don't know if there's a way to put conditions, you know? We can look into it.
And that's the request. I don't know that it can be done, but if we could do it, it seems like a nice thing that we could do for taxpayers.
So, yeah, it's worth exploring because I think
Have we heard of people interested in these vehicles?
No, I mean, this was, no. Actually, I was thinking, if the town's getting rid of a lawnmower, I need a lawnmower. But the town's not getting rid of any lawnmowers, but
Peggy Sam has his hand raised.
Okay, yep. Sam, do you have a comment on that? Is he promoted? Yes.
Okay, so so the municipal process, anybody can make an account there. I don't know how we can make it where the town and Madison residents get first crack at it, but there is a 9% fee that they have to pay if they're the successful bidder. I don't know if we, if we do a separate auction for town residents, I just, it's just going to prolong the process. And who's going to keep track of it? I know in the past that, you know, we just have put these things out to bid, you know, over the, you know, the regular process, you know, posting in the paper, stuff like that. I don't know if there's a way to do it internally to town residents, but I guess you could look at it. But a lot of these vehicles are in pretty poor condition, so I'm not sure if the town residents are going to want them.
Okay, we'll find out what the thing is. And we'll look back and see as it's possible. I mean, obviously you don't want something that, we're not getting a lot for these vehicles to be in. So we don't want to basically absorb costs that would make it more expensive than actually selling them.
And we don't want to absorb any liability.
Well, that's true. Yeah, and I don't, yeah, how, what the warranties, like what your warranty
It's as-is, cash and carry.
I think they've got to take their whole pass through warranty too.
That's the way it is on the auction, too. You're buying the vehicle as-is.
They give warranty over selling them?
No. And do they know it's the town of Madison vehicle though? Or is it just, do they know it's a town of Madison vehicle when they're sold on municipal? Because I mean, it's like, they do
So when you go on, they will tell you the municipality that's selling the vehicle. And you can see, it's like eBay for governments. And I mean, it's, we see stuff on there, there's, it's crazy what you can get. So
There was a house up there that they auctioned off.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And, you know, the Madison police switched to the municipal bid process, I think, a year or two ago. And they were pretty successful, and they ended up getting more money than the normal pathway. So that's why we switched as well.
So, so Sam, just to flag that as an idea for our little project that we discussed to do, to sell buildings?
Yeah. It's an option.
And that's a fair point, and I think it would be a nice thing to offer the public, you know. So we'll look into what the thing is. Yes, there's a, okay. So on, in favor of approving item F, say aye. Okay, great. All right, yeah, we'll look into that. So item number seven is discussed for proposed changes to the town tax incentive program as recommended by the Economic Development Commission. So we have the chair of the Economic Development Commission here, and I think we might have some members also online if you want to invite them to join the panel. Greg Wagner, and I'm not sure if there are any other members on there. But Greg Wagner is also there. So you have in your packet a markup of the policy and then a memo explaining some of the rationale behind this. And I think this was through conversations we've had at the board level prior to, I think, generally joining the board about this has been an evolving process, it's fairly new, and we're kind of learning. We had two applications a couple of years ago during COVID that were a little kind of different, you know? And then we had the most recent one that we didn't move forward with. And some of the conversation was how do we align this more when we're going to offer these incentives and tax benefits? How do we make sure that we're incentivizing what we want in the community, right? So, and that was something that the commission went back and did some work on. And Bruce probably involved those conversations too. And they came up with these proposed amendments. And I just want to highlight that it doesn't change the economics, it's up, the threshold is raised, right? So now it has to be $500,000 versus $100,000?
$250,000.
$100,000, but otherwise the benefit is the same. So there's no financial changes to it. It's just, how do we make it clear what we're looking to do with this policy? But also give us flexibility depending on the project. So I guess to open up for discussion, I don't know if you want to opine a little bit?
Can I start with a question? I guess I'm just curious, I didn't understand this when I talked to Ryan. What was the, what was the reason why we made these changes? Is it to increase the incentives?
No, I think it was because you felt that it wasn't clear what the criteria, what the objective of granting was meant to be. So how were you meant to approve an application if you didn't really understand what we were trying to get at? And so, and there was, there was concern that, that it was, there was potential for applications where that it might be disputed, whichever way your decision went, it might be disputed that it was right or wrong and that it wasn't clear. So we had a look at it and we agreed because originally there's only one criteria. That's that it increases the grant list by more than $250,000. That leaves it open to a lot. So we agreed with you, but we looked at it and then came up with some recommendations.
I think the good thing is we have now more things to point to because we finished the strategic plan, we have updated POCD. So it was good timing to kind of make sure that it was all
In fact, that's going to be my comment. In 3A, I think as well notes that as the board considers this, we are looking to see if it meets a goal of the town's strategic plan. Andrew, I would love to make that a plural. I think the more goals in a project meant, the more impressive it would be for this Board of Selectmen, more likely would be to grant. This particular language seems to focus on, it just has to meet one goal. And I think that's certainly a good minimum. I would love to see projects that meet multiple goals in our plan.
Would we say one or more?
Yeah, I mean, it's taking a singular
One of the things that we've added is that in addition to the application, this is under procedures, section five, we've added that in addition to the application, the applicant will provide a letter of support to the application that demonstrates how the project will have a special benefit to the community with particular reference to the consideration set out in clause three. So the idea of that was that the onus is on them to tell us why, why it's a special project. And that would address that. If you're meeting one goal, there aren't that many, there are only certain goals of the strategic plan. And if you meet one, the others are sort of completely separate. But a typical example, one you granted the other day, is filling a site that's been empty for a long time and out for development and has had various developers try and do it. And now we've actually got something going ahead, filling a hole in town that we want. That, that in itself then starts to go to other, immediately to other goals of the increased employment. So all of the, if you increase employment, that's a, that's a goal of the strategic plan, the town's strategic plan.
I'm agreeing with everything you're saying.
So I don't see that what that gets you, I mean, other than to add further confusion.
Perhaps I foresee a day where we might have multiple projects in front of us and not feel that we're in a position to agree to multiple projects. And I guess a project that met more goals would be more impressive, I would think, than one that met fewer goals.
But I, but I think that we retain at all times the ultimate sole discretion to pick and choose what we do and what we don't. And I think your bigger point is a valid one, that any, anyone who comes in with a request like this should be showing all the boxes that they tick. And if they can't, then, then they should expect struggle from us. But I also worry, and this is what, the third, maybe fourth revision since we've implemented this document, and I'm worried that we are deep into greatest the enemy of good.
One suggestion I would have, though, rather than just, it sounds like a miracle by saying meets a goal, why don't we just say that the development aligns with the strategic plan? So that way they can outline how it aligns with it. And it might be multiple goals, it might be the values of the community, you know, vigorous, rather than like a threshold that has to be crossed. That's fine. Would you be comfortable with that change?
I'd be very comfortable.
I mean, I think we're signaling pretty clearly, we want to see projects that are in alignment with the community's vision for Madison. And remembering that we're not giving up in this document any authority or discretion to say yea or nay. Certainly, if we had what we felt were competing projects, you know, we would be able to, we would be able to choose.
Well, we could, I mean, we could always pick one, all, none, you know? It's just a matter of what is best for meeting the needs of the POCD and the strategic plan, and then what's ultimately going to help our tax base at the end of the day? Because we're not ever taking tax money away, we're only potentially increasing the grant list. And, you know, there's a set period of time where they'll maintain their pre-construction assessments, but then it would increase from there.
I think the challenge, though, guys, is we, we want to make sure that this isn't a subjective decision that we're making, right? I mean, I think if it's one or more, that kind of makes it a little clearer, kind of like where you're going now, which is, you know, if they're hitting all the boxes, then it's like a no-brainer that we accept it. But if we start getting into the subjectivity of, well, I'm not sure it's this, or I'm not sure it's this, or we're cherry-picking which projects, I'm not sure that's the right answer either. We have to be careful.
Well, and that's on us. I think the discipline to objectively consider is on us. I think one of the concerns I've had through all of these revisions is that it narrows down and constructs limits. Not only the projects that come to us, but also the defensible actions that we can take. And so simply, you know, I continue to look at this as primarily a marketing document to developers that, hey, we know that this pathway exists for you through state statute. We've considered it, and we've got guidance for you on how we want to see development considered in Madison that is compatible with the town, as articulated in the strategic plan and the plan of conservation and development. So anything that limits us more than that, I think, begins to stifle the conversation. And to be, you know, sort of really honest here, it's not like we've got a stack of applications. So, I mean, I, my personal opinion is, is let's get this approved, let it simmer. Let's agree we're not going to touch this again for a couple of years. And let it, and let it just work, and let the users come back to us and say, jeez, I wish I'd have known this, or I wish I'd have known that, and revise it. I do have one technical addition, I asked for this in the conversations, and I'll take that up with Ryan because my voice wasn't heard. I do think that companies or developers that come in and want to avail themselves of this should be given the draft should be given the draft agreement that they'll be asked to sign at the back end of the process. So there's a, there's an actual agreement.
Disclosure kind of thing.
Right, there's an actual agreement at the back end that, that they'll have to sign in order to do this. And they should know what they're signing up for before they go through all the hassle and put us through the, the time to consider it. So I'd like to see as part of the procedure that they are handed a document.
This is the policy for approving the application. They, they apply to the town, the town planner.
I was going to say that should be part of the application, not the policy.
It's just part of the application process.
So it just being listed, attached as a copy of the.
We, we heard that, I thought it was a very good idea, but it's not part of the policy.
Right.
It is simply the town, whoever it is who issues the application
Just has a staple.
Should staple a draft contract to the back end, saying this is what you, these are the terms that we're expecting you to sign.
Yeah, well, and I think that there is, we'll have to work on that because each particular thing is going to require having two of those, probably three now with the other one. There's nuances to it that are property specific. So, but yes, we could put something to put like a template.
There's some boiling.
Right, right.
Obviously, you won't have the address of the property or anything like that.
And one of, one of the big issues that was raised was the ability to appeal.
Right.
And so that is an important thing that people need to understand that they waived their right if they're getting a tax benefit from the town and not paying taxes for a period of time, you can't sue us because you don't like your valuation. So that got, was contentious, believe it or not, which I was kind of astounded. So to your point, I think it's important that's not front, part of the package. So, yeah, well, well noted, and I think when we put the materials together, it'll clarify that.
Good.
But let me just get back to this though. So are we in agreement or not about the language I proposed? Or would you rather we meet at least one of the goals or what, like just so we don't spin our wheels?
I'm, I'm agree with you on that. I think we should.
Along with, are you good with that or you want, okay.
Do you want to, do you want to just word sniff it on the fly here and approve that modified document? Rather than sending it back to E C D?
My only thing is there's nothing financial here, right? So, because I know Stacy had, had wanted to review this, but I'm, technically this is not impacting financially, anything. The terms of the, aren't different financially. So it's just a criteria that we're changing here, except for the 500, which I don't think.
We've changed, we've changed, one other thing, we've changed the word criteria to the word consideration.
Oh, right, yep.
To give it a different concept.
Right.
So that, that was the.
Well, and I think that also once again provides flexibility.
That's right, that's the purpose of doing.
Yeah, yeah.
But if you wanted to change this to be that the, the development aligns with the town's strategic plan and, and, and meets a goal of.
Yep, I think that.
I, I would vote yes for that tonight.
I think, yeah, there's just consistent, so. Should be.
I, I, yeah.
And then I guess the other thing, if we are, I mean, we can just vote on it this next meeting, but and send additional comments. If you want to vote, you can open up the agenda to take.
Let's be done.
Yeah, I think so. Okay. All right, so right now we're just in discussion and then we can make, once we discuss what our changes are, we can make them. I don't even have to agenda, right?
Well, it's only discussed.
Yeah, but I think, I mean, and basically making a new motion was not an additional. And, yeah, an additional motion, yeah, on, on the same agenda topic. Right, so. Yeah, so I'm just saying, so why don't we go through and then we'll do that. The, I, I do was thinking about this, that the applicant we're applicable will unifies. You know, that's like a shout, right? So what if, when you say we're applicable, what if there's something unique they just can't get a local person?
Is enriched.
Yeah, I just say that's a very strong kind of policy.
But it's a consideration.
Yeah, it's a consideration, yeah, okay, that's true. So we're not making, saying you have to.
No one's saying you have to, the idea is you're better off if you have. But you don't have to.
Maybe we're applicable, do we say we're possible? When, okay, I, I, I'm, I'm not, I, I don't want to word, like, I mean, a lawyer would say will is like shall, although they're two different, so we're mandating it, but.
Where possible.
They've used applicable everywhere else, and I think, and I think that this is a, you know, that.
Wordsmithing thing?
Well, the, the, the primary bullet of this is considerations. So I, I don't, I don't think it's a thou shalt kind of moment in the document.
Consider.
Okay. Assess real estate value is obviously not, not assess, is it, I, I should note this for the thing, assess value or market value? It's assessed value, so it's actually.
It's grant list, it's in the grant list.
So it's 500,000 worth of whatever that is, 70% so.
It's divided by 70%, it's a market value.
Yeah, so it's, it's much higher actually, so these are bigger projects, yeah. I, I, I went through this one, I lost one, but. Is that, you know, one could say, well, that's a house, somebody's house, some of these values are comparable to a house.
He says somebody's parish house.
Yeah, I know, yeah, not even, it's like. So we had, we talked about commercial versus residential, this is any property, it doesn't matter if it's residential.
That's right, it's any.
It's, it's how, I'm just trying to think through, somebody building a million dollar house, hey, I need a tax. You're not adding jobs, are you? You're using local everything.
No, you're not adding jobs if you're building a house. You're not, you, you're, you're.
What is a home based business?
Probably not meeting a goal of the strategic plan.
Well, what if you're a lease company? It's a home based company, they're building a $2 million house and they are building an office onto the property as well to have their minions come and work for them.
I would invite them, I would invite them to try to navigate the process and, and take their chances.
Somebody could align it, but then once again, this also has to go through Board of Finance and Town Meeting, so.
Right, but I mean, it's, it's.
For approval, I'm just thinking through scenarios, you know?
But it would be good that they align, to be honest with you, that's okay.
I, I, yeah, I.
And they, and they do have to separately say why they believe the project will be a special benefit to the town. So, I mean.
I don't think anybody's trying, you know?
That's true.
Yeah, I wish the whole point is incentive.
At, at the end of the day, you, you have the, the ability to say, no, we, we don't want to grant it to you.
Okay, yeah, I know, once again, these are just considerations, I'm not quite sure. Okay.
I realize there should be one other change, in the very first paragraph, under purpose, in the last line, it should be eligibility considerations not quite here.
In purpose.
In, in paragraph, the last, the last, we're getting to wordsmith things, that's one.
So I'm just trying to think about this, is this, is this an ordinance or is this policy? So we can just change it, right? That's right, kind of vote, so we don't have to do anything else. And then applicants have to go through the, the two boards plus the town meeting to get, actually get the benefits. So, okay, so it's a policy. All right, any other comments? No? Bruce, do you want to make a motion?
Uh, I'll move that we open the agenda for the purpose of adding an action item to approve the Madison Tax Incentive Program Policy as amended in this meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Move that we approve the Madison Tax Incentive Program Policy as amended in this meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? Well, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously, so you got your new policy.
Then you go, you'll do that.
No, this is definitely, I know we've had multiple conversations over the years and this, I think is a good thing to, to get this clarification in there, so it's well done, so thank you for that.
Thanks, Greg. Thanks, E C D C.
Yeah, and then I think we need to figure out how to highlight this, right? And then also we'll get the application cleaned up and stuff like that, I'll speak to Erin about that. So it's clear and on the website and, and go from there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the town planner is the person, the policy now identifies as the person who runs it.
Yes.
I'm sure Erin is through.
I know. Well, she's a facilitator, but it makes sense because these are projects going through the land use office usually. So, you know, it's, it's, it makes sense. And really she's just collecting the information, packaging it, and then it would go to you, to us, and, and then if we move it on to the board.
Yes, so sorry.
Okay, great, all right, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, I'm gonna.
Thanks, Greg.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Greg, too, thank you.
Thank you.
So item number eight, then we'll move on. And I've got to just make a slight adjustment to the number on here, this should have been, we just had the wrong number on here. So item number eight, discussing take action to accept a B G A fiscal year 24 burn discretionary community project grant for $114,000 for a Madison Using Family Services Police Social Worker, pending Board of Finance.
Seven.
Second.
Okay, great, Scott, you wanted to spend a second on this, as obviously we voted on the grants and all this other stuff.
Yeah, yeah, so just, we had run a very successful pilot program integrating social work with police department back in 2022. We did propose some money to go into the town budget, a part-time position to continue that as a successful pilot. And we were encouraged to find some rent money at least to try to get this off the ground, which, which we did. This, this grant is actually a special projects grant that I applied for, the app, Family Services, for initially what was basically a one-year project, that's what we were allowed to apply for. That's why the funding number of $114,000, that was at the time a full-time position for one year. I'll go into detail, but, you know, with as a special projects, the federal government and this particular branch of the government gets, considers all of the proposals from across the country and then approves of a handful of them, among which we were one. And then we were given other guidance, we were allowed to sort of expand the amount of time that we had to spend this money and give me a little bit more direction around how we could, you know, what we could do with it. So we developed with input of Peggy and Chief, as well as Lieutenant York, came up with an idea of having part-time, piloting a part-time position, integrated social worker with the police for two years. And money here, basically the $114,000 almost exclusively will be spent on salary. We can't collect any sort of admin costs from this grant, it does need to be applied directly to the position. The remaining money that's not going to salary, will be the training and equipment that will be identified as, as the needs to support this. We've got a job description now in a draft form, as well as some policy that we did not have in place for the pilot. We do have that, pending your approval and the approval of the Board of Finance, we'll post the position. Hopefully, hire somebody fairly quickly.
And just want to highlight, we, they, they did actually propose this to Chief Trump in the budget cycle two years ago, as we specifically said, let's go after a grant. And to your kudos, you got the grant to cover it, so it's great. So now we have two years to really vet this without having to pay for it. And then obviously we'll have to make a big decision at the end of the two years, if there's a lot of value there, we can, we'll have to roll it into the budget. But at least we have two years now that we don't have to pay for and we can see if it's a, a value. And I also noticed that Gelford has a person that.
That's all that, yeah.
Yeah, theirs is full time, isn't it?
Full time, yeah. But they've also developed a lot of programming through their social services and Use the Family Services Department that already were very involved with, with their police departments. They were a little ahead of us in terms of how they were integrating a lot of those services. They're incredibly effective to have a human service person on site. And maybe even more importantly, someone who follows up afterwards. This is really helping to connect people at their most vulnerable moments and usually at their most critical moments where they're perhaps more open or more in need or more desperate for the help. So it's really about the timing and removing barriers to getting people help. This helps people with opioid crisis, this helps people with mental health crisis, and these are all mass residents. The reason it falls under our department is because we do, we do social work, we, we do clinical services. So, so it's a good fit for us, we know how to do these positions. And we're incredibly fortunate to have such a great police department to partner with.
Great, so I know we've had a lot of conversations about this and now it's just been full of the invitation, if there's any other questions? Board members, no? All right, with that then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, item number eight unanimously passes, look forward to seeing this. And maybe when the new person is on board and stuff, it might be good to give them a report back after a couple of months and talk a little bit about, you know?
Yeah, we collect a lot of data for the purposes of the grant and basically all the data I think that we're going to collect is going to go towards informing the town about the position. It'll be good information to have that.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you, Scott. Item number nine is discussing the action to approve the return of ARPA project balances totaling $161,589 to the ARPA clients.
Second.
Okay, and you've got a schedule just detailing these recent balances and things that we were able to clean up. We, I know we have a list of outstanding requests that we received from the local community as well as the town. We're waiting for a few more details, so we thought we'd do it all together. So we'll have an hour of balance and then we'll have the details on some of the requests and we'll vet that all the next, next month, so.
Are we expecting the 275 to change or is that now the number?
Uh, I, it'll still be, there's still some outstanding numbers.
That make up, that make up that.
May come back, yeah, so we're still, I mean, that's.
I, I would speculate that, I don't believe there's large numbers still remaining, but there will be balances available in some projects once they are complete. And I think such as like the Bachi Court, the $1,000 that was left. I mean, I think those are the kind of places we'll probably end up.
I mean, there's more to outliers to, though I thought downtown center.
So that's on here.
Oh, it is on here, I forgot, did we have that on to this one?
Yeah, so out of these five projects, the bottom three.
That was the one I was saying.
Yeah, the bottom three are purely, the project is complete, those are the funds are being returned. The top two that are a little larger, the first one for the downtown center, the 78,000, one of the criteria for the grant is that you need to be under contract by December 31st of this year. And we won't be designed and under contract by December 31st for this little piece. So that's coming back so that we can use it elsewhere. And then the electrical infrastructure, still moving along. Peggy's point, there are still funds encumbered for that, it's not finished. So we might even give back a little bit more money, that project's gone really well. But this, the town engineer is assured is safe to return this balance and we potentially.
And I think one of the things we'll talk about is for a last minute sweep into a project, right? So whatever, $100,000, $30,000, we just boom. And I think the other thing is we're going to be getting the bids back on Garvin Point. Next week.
I don't know why I have the 19th of May.
Yeah, it's, it's September, yeah. So that is one that could be an active project that, you know, we might be able to sweep some money in to cover some odds and ends there, because you know that one's the budget site, right? So we're kind of watching some, a few projects and then depending on what we decide also at our next meeting in terms of some of the community requests, we can then, we'll have a place to put, I guess, my point, so. So right now we'll turn this back and then we'll have a bigger discussion on our next. So all in favor of approving the return of the ARPA project balance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, item number nine passes unanimously. Okay, item number 10. Um, okay, item number ten is I'm gonna make an amendment to this motion, and I sent you something in email, I don't know if you had a chance to do it, but I'll explain it. Discuss and take action to award a contract for the downtown holiday lights project to downtown decorations for an amount not to exceed fifty one thousand dollars, pending confirmation of contract terms funded through ARPA.
So. Second.
Okay, great, um, so we ran an RFP on this and, um, we had one response, and it was actually below this number, but there was some items in there. We're still trying to meet with the vendor to clarify, but we really gotta get this order going, because we're banging up once again, somehow here we are, like in the middle of September, and we still haven't secured our holiday lighting, so it's just, you know. So, um, I know we've been trying to work with a local lender as well, but there was just some, you know, uh, issues with timing, and then also the RFP process and everything else where, um, these guys actually have done work in other trolling communities, including, let's say, Brook, um, and I think we just wanna verify a few things before we actually firm it up. And I left the not to exceed, cause there was a few things we thought they might be short on in their offer that we wanted funding there for you to take it on to the contract, so. And this is what we approved, the fifty one, at our ARPA discussion, which we've been doing, so.
I think it's, uh, it's good to emphasize that this is not a one year cost, this will serve us for X number of years.
It, it will serve us for hopefully at least five, but more than that, cause now we're buying and reusing, yeah, we're buying and reusing. Um, and then there'll be a, a, a nominal charge of, you know, three thousand possible or four thousand dollars every year to take them up and put down, but it's definitely gonna be a.
Pardon? Just a little mess.
No, 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 it, it's this, a firm downtown decoration, so it, it, as much as we had hoped to work with them, it just wasn't working out the way the RFP process worked, and then the timing, we kind of missed a window with them. Um, and we just had, we had to make a decision, so, and we had an actual response, we had to follow our process, and this was our, our process, so. Um, but there'll be future opportunities, that's for sure, we're doing our thing, so, um, so with that, any further questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, um, all right, great, so we can get that done. And I know Lindsay was going to, just she wanted to confirm that they can actually get this order done, now, I think the guy's like, I need to put the order in, so. But she was gonna talk to him, and so I'll, I'll follow up with her tomorrow, but, um, hopefully, that's why I have this pending on here, cause if we can't get confirmation that they can deliver, still then we're gonna have to maybe rethink about the fresh again, so, which I hate to do, cause it's the cost. Um, okay, moving on to item number eleven, um, which is discuss the draft charge for the Madison two hundred America two fifty steering committee. Um, I sent around, this is following on our kind of high level conversation, I sent around a draft, uh, charge, which I take no pride in ownership of this, so I'm happy to take thoughts. I kind of thought through.
We can wordsmith you.
I know, you can wordsmith me, I also, in the membership composition, I was just trying to think through, you know, we wanna keep it focused, but at the same point, we do wanna allow some flexibility with just members of the public who aren't board members of somebody's organization, so that's why I made this proposition of nine people. Um, and so thoughts on this, with the idea it would be nice to have a final draft for our next meeting to just get really. So, any, any, uh, feedback?
Two, two sort of open questions, um, I was interested in the inclusion of the Board of Education as a member, liaison member to this, and I'm trying to understand what the natural role there is.
Uh, because I actually, I talked to the superintendent, we think it's important that we integrate Madison's history in the school district. Um, they have like, I think it's the fourth grade where they do a, um, you know, I.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Do you have a third or fourth grade that they do a history of Madison?
Um, but there are, um, you know, it used to be, I think, more substantial, if you go back a lot further, where there was a lot more involvement, and so this is also America's two hundred and fiftieth. So I think it would be good to have the, the schools involved in some capacity, um, whether it's some events they participate in, or, so, you know, we've talked about, they're a liaison, right? So they don't have to come to every meeting or whatever, but somehow an educational component that ties in with the school district, so.
Um, the other one, under duties and responsibilities, the last bullet item, um, adopt a plan for the documentation, identification and preservation of cultural and historic resources, that felt a little out of scope for a centennial committee. They're not an art, they're not an art.
No, I would agree, I, I think that's, my thoughts there, and I looked at like different scopes at different places for this to get ideas. I would like to, it would be good to have some sort of follow on task for the town, like somehow to say, okay, now the, the direction for the town. Um, be cut, like doc, like somehow recording everything that would be done over the last year, I don't know what the right word is, so maybe this isn't the right way, uh, to word it. But somehow, when they're done, they need to turn over and have the record of what had been accomplished by the bicentennial committee.
They need like a how to binder.
Yeah, yeah.
A follow up reporter, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, somehow, so it's just not lost, like wouldn't it be nice now if we could go back and find a, you know, here's what the town did for the celebration.
Record of events or something like that, yeah.
A legacy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, some sort of legacy, and then we can include it in the town archives as well as with, you know, Charlotte, it's whatever. Cause right now it's all scattered, and I think that's the problem, we're gonna have to go.
There's no blueprint, yeah.
Each organization, there's a town record of what the town did, really, that we can find, it's more through different, uh, civic groups and stuff, what they did for the celebration, so.
Peggy, I like the precision of the title for this committee, in lax kazas.
You want a better acronym, don't you?
Well, and I don't know how to call, because it's two different things coming open, what do we wanna call it? We don't wanna call it the six, what is the, uh, I put it in here, the word for two hundred and fifty, semi quinsentennial. But, uh, you know, I, I don't know that.
Well, we need some creative types to help us with that, it's a, it's an accurate title, but.
Let's think about it for our next meeting before we finalize this, but, uh, we can just call it the, we could just call it our bicentennial.
Planning.
There's gotta be some advertising executives in this town that can give us. That's not the name of the, um, marketing effort, we can call it something else.
This is just a committee.
Yeah, and we're gonna have a logo, cause a lot of towns do that now, they have like a logo, so everything gets the official seal, so if like, the chamber does an event and it's related to the bicentennial, we'll put the seal on, you know? So it's kind of, so everything gets tied together, um, but yeah, okay, but I, I, I toss it out to the public and the board members for a sexier name for the committee. And I think if you wanna read through it and like shoot me some, uh, you know, wordsmithing, that's great, we'll pull it all together and just vote on it at the next meeting. Are you guys okay with the composition?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, am I missing some group? I mean, there's a lot of groups that are on here, but I feel like this is the core kind of history.
I think we can always add two, like, yes.
Yeah, I guess we can, and they can go to the meetings and talk about it.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
This is a starting one, I think.
Right. Okay. Um, and then I, I guess the other thing is, do we allow? My thought, I didn't really write this in there, but I think we allow each organization to recommend who they want to be, right, to us, and then.
Yeah, I think it's good, some of it's just gonna be interest and availability too.
Yeah, I, I know, I know. Okay, any other questions on this, and then we'll, um, we'll, we'll come back with some changes, um, and I'll send this around to a, a group. I did send it to a few people I'd met with like in June about this, get their thoughts, maybe I'll send to the EDC, the change, you know, some of the people around here, just to get their thoughts, make sure they're comfortable with that. All right, and then that is agenda, uh, I'm, okay, good, so we'll move on to item number twelve. Uh, discuss and take action to set the date of Wednesday, September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, at six thirty PM for special town meeting in Brown School Auditorium for the following purpose. A, you approve a special appropriation amount of three and a half million dollars for the capital approval program from the undesigned fund balance.
So, who?
Second, okay, so basically this is, um, this was the special appropriation, um, discussed by the Board of Slapman and the Board of Finance, it approved. Um, it's part of the Madison investment plan where we continue to kind of take, um, our fund balance, which is now like a twenty three million dollars, and try to put it to good use to help future budgets, so this is money by infusing it into the CIP plan, we're helping mitigate future contributions to CIP and future budgets. Um, and so this was discussed at length, I know, in June, um, and we just have to hold a town meeting because of the size of their appropriation, so, um, and then we're holding it in, uh, Brown School, because we, we're still struggling with where do we have a place that, uh, can, you know, if we have a, a meet forum, right? We need to have, um, a hundred and fifty seats, right? And so when we try the Chin Town Gym, people didn't feel very happy about the zone gym ops, and, and you have to like rent chairs and set them up. Um, and so, you know, and then Paulson, because of the school, I think there was a conflict there, so then Brown actually has a really nice auditorium. And I also wanna highlight that, um, you know, we don't have a lot of air conditioned facilities, but Brown is also air conditioned, so it's gonna be hot September. It'll be indoors, but it does have seating capacity for a hundred and fifty for forum and more. So we're trying to kind of test out different locations, any other questions or comments on this? This is just setting the date, so, um, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so notice this will go out in the papers, we normally do for our town meetings and, uh, be in our, on the website. Um, okay, uh, now we'll open up to citizens' comments, if, do we have any, uh, citizens in the room that would like to make a comment, just raise your hand, no? One ones?
I have one.
Okay, yes, Andrew Wood, you gotta state your name and address, as a.
Andrew Wood, thirty seven CBU Avenue.
Okay.
I'd like to draw the attention to the article in the USA Today, today, that, um, gave a shout out to Madison as one of the twenty places to go to in New Jersey, Connecticut and New York for the weekend.
That's great, I saw something, I didn't get a chance to read it yet, I know, I was floating around, that's awesome, that's great, good.
They also made the Wall Street Journal, same subject.
Oh, great, no, it's good to hear, so that's great, um, but we don't want too many.
Keep it a little, our little secret.
Also, I just wanna say, wait, we do have some people, attendees online, are there any hands raised online? Going once? Going twice? With that, we'll close, item number thirteen, and then I guess, uh, motion to adjourn.
Go.
All right, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.